All right, good evening, everyone. We're gonna get started. Excuse me. We're gonna go ahead and get started. All right, perfect. Yeah, good evening, everyone. So, thank you for coming. You are at the July 31st, 2025, Abita Springs Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting. We have a nice crowd, so we'll stick to our agenda and hopefully get out of here in a reasonable time, but there's a lot to cover. First item up on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance, as always. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, roll call. All members of the Commission present minus Lex. See if, he may be a few minutes late, we'll see. But any members of staff and Desire, I don't know, do we wanna just run through real quick?
Sure, Kristen, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Alex Carter, CEO of Desireline.
Evelyn Campo, Desireline.
I'm Matt Wilson with Desireline.
Perfect, thank you. Any calls for agenda modifications? No? None. Next item is acceptance of the minutes from the June meeting.
I move that we accept the minutes from the June meeting.
Second emotion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Accepted. Okay, we've got essentially one item up on the planning section, and that is introduction of the Abita Meadows. It's one item, two topics there, the PUD approval, and then the subdivision approval. Just strictly discussion items, no voting occurring tonight, but this is, this is, this is Commission's first introduction for the Meadows PUD approval and subdivision. So, we'll start with staff report.
So, they're not really discussion items, they're just being introduced tonight. The introduction of the PUD approval, the way that's gonna be handled, handled is, we're going to, at the next meeting, the August meeting, it'll be introduced, it'll be a public, I mean, it'll be a public hearing, and then a vote. And if that is voted, however it's voted, it will move to town council for them to vote on it. As far as the subdivision, that will also, that's a separate thing, that'll be voted, the subdivision of the property in track one. And you guys will also vote on that next month, or, you know, have it, have conditions that need to be met, and then they come back for final approval.
Understood.
Yeah.
So, the PUD wasn't approved in 2017, this is different?
Good question.
Um, just, just to answer your question, the question was whether the PUD was approved back in 2017. Our understanding is that the preliminary plat was approved, which is the first step in the subdivision process and the PUD process. They're two different things. So, the final plat, Planning Commission approves. The PUD, y'all will make a recommendation to the council, or the alderman, and the alderman will then accept the PUD and approve the rezoning of the property. It kinda goes hand in hand. You gotta have the final plat in order to get the PUD. But it's all preliminary approved.
Okay. So, is there, do we call that introduced? Is there further discussion on it?
No, I think tonight is really just letting y'all know it's in your packet, and that the town is gonna send any additional materials they submit between now and the next meeting. The applicant isn't here tonight, but he'll be here to next, the next meeting to answer any questions y'all may have. So, just be on the lookout for any additional materials, and more questions and discussion will happen at the next meeting.
Okay.
Tonight isn't a public hearing on the matter, it's just an introduction.
You'll go to the podium to make your comments, three minutes, like, not until the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we, we will have a public comments section. Okay. So, that concludes our planning section of the agenda? Okay. All right, next item up under zoning is update on comprehensive rezoning process. So, this has been, this has been going on for months. Hopefully, this isn't a surprise. We had some good, uh, public input a couple of weeks ago, and Alex is gonna talk us through that, and where we landed.
Yeah, and so, y'all are moving through this quickly. Typically, these processes take a year to two years, but y'all are really leveraging your master planning process. And so, for those of y'all who were able to join us on the 18th, it was a super productive meeting. Tonight is really all about reporting in on what we heard from the micro survey results. There were some questions that came in. We're gonna talk about, um, the impact of work underway, and how the survey is and feedback is impacting our thought processes. Because we do have, we did get some questions about, well, what are y'all doing about these results? How are they manifesting in the drafts? We're gonna give y'all an update on the July 17th Q and A working session, which had over, like, 100 people come. It was a really productive day. And then, we're gonna talk about some draft zoning and map discussion areas. The materials y'all have at the front door include the updated permitted use table, as well as a summary of all the comments that we received at the 7/18 meeting. And I think tonight, the goal really is to kinda brief y'all on what we heard, hear from y'all and the public on sort of decision points where you have, like, not conflicting views, but views that don't necessarily line up for properties or for different elements of the code, and sort of just get some discussion going so that for your next meeting in August, you'll have an updated code, that's a clean draft, that has all these edits incorporated into it, and you'll have an updated map that also has all these edits updated into it. And so, next month, it's really like, today is all about, like, these are the things that are unresolved that we're still talking about. Let's get some direction on that, and then you'll see those new versions. And next month, you could vote on it, or you could defer it one more time. If there's more things that y'all are looking at, because we do wanna get you full clean code with no markups. It's easy to read, and you should expect that, like, in the next two to three weeks. So, you have at least two, two to three weeks to read it over before the August meeting. Okay, yeah, Kristen's just advising, we're not gonna advertise for the vote, so next month is just gonna be a discussion. So, you'll get the clean packet, we'll talk through it. And so, you know, we'll post it online. So, if anybody has questions about it, next month is a great time to come to the meeting. Um, let's see, okay, next. So, just in summary, the micro survey results. Oh, perfect. These were posted to social media, but they were a specific, like, ArcGIS survey. It was open from May 29th to the 26th of June. It had over 200 responses. It's kind of a weird thing. The Facebook poll had, like, 500 responses, and the first poll had, like, four or 40. So, this is kind of, I think, a good balance. And we are seeing that, you know, people did, for the most part, like, the Conservation Residential. You'll see that's 42.7% like how it's mapped in the proposed code, and 21% of people thought it should be mapped on more properties. So, that's more than half the town was like, yes, please do this. I do think, though, it's important that 20% of the town don't like the district. And so, and just keeping in mind that where it's applied today, it really is, it's a two-acre minimum lot size, and it reflects the current constrictions related to sewer. So, like, in order for you to develop on those sites, you've gotta have independent private sewer. In order to do that with LDEQ, you need to have a minimum two-acre lot. And so, even though it seems as though we're being more restrictive, it's actually the situation on the ground today. We're just really managing people's expectations. They don't have a zoning district that tells them it can be 90 by 120, and they come into the office and they're told, well, no, you actually need two acres. This kind of makes it clearer in terms of what they can do today. If the town in the future, you know, expands the sewer capacity, and this, this public sewer is more widely available, I think it would make more sense to reassess this. But this really is just, like, you know, comparing, it's, it's really letting people know what's possible today, and reflecting existing conditions. Related to the allowing duplexes in the Neighborhood Residential District, that was a resounding no. We saw this also in the Facebook poll. 89.5% were like, please do not make duplexes permitted in the Neighborhood Residential. So, we took it out of that, we took it out of the Conservation. We thought Conservation might have been a nice, you know, compromise. And if y'all are following me, you can look at your permitted use table, and you'll see that the duplexes are only permitted right now in Townhouse and Multifamily in the residential districts. And then, for the commercial districts, they're permitted in the commercial, and they are permitted in the mixed use. And so, when you see those mixed-use districts, keep that in mind, and the civic. But I think that's in the spirit of the mixed-use district, is to try to, you know, generate some more opportunity that's, that's minimally invasive. For the other one, do you support the creation of the new resident, traditional residential district? 70% of the respondents said they didn't. 22% said they did. I will say, when we had the meeting on this, on the 17th, we had people who were also interested in it, and were like, 90 by 120 is a really large lot, you know? And so, it's, I think it's a perception versus where you apply it matters, right? So, I think that the perception is, if we have this traditional residential neighborhood, it's gonna be everywhere. We're gonna have all these small lots. And what we keep kind of explaining to people is, well, you only have them where you map it, right? And there's only one area in town right now that's proposed mapped, and there seems to be some interest in it. But you can always really be thoughtful and careful about where you apply it. And as of right now, I think we're recommending that you keep it, only because it's important to be able to promote some affordability. And having smaller lots does make the housing stock more affordable, and builders can do a little bit more if you have a smaller lot. Because it offsets some of those construction costs, right? You get two houses instead of one. That is not us telling the town of Abita that we want doubles everywhere, or that we want, you know, super dense development. Like I said, it's like, only where you draw it on the map is where it would be permitted. And we're not even sure that where it's on the map is appropriate, and we're gonna talk more about that tonight. But I think we have heard y'all loud and clear, we know you don't, we know most people don't like this. But 20% is still some people, and so, it kinda makes us say, if some people want it, then you might wanna allow it in some very limited places, right? And so, that's the, that's the thought process. But we wanna hear from y'all, if you don't like it, we respect that, and, and we wanna hear that opinion. And we're continuing to try to figure out the way through this. Yes, yeah, you're good. And that's, so, this slide kinda gets at what I was just talking about, in terms of how everything is manifesting. I just didn't need to go through it with all this, but if you need, if you wanna see it in writing, it's all there. And so, just about the meeting on the 18th, we had over 100 residents attend. And the nice thing about this meeting was, you know, it was one-on-one, so you didn't have to get up to a public podium and explain, you know, what your concerns were. You could talk just to us about your, your property one-on-one and ask questions. And I think that was one of the best parts about that meeting. So, we had a lot of people come, we have those 76 comments. A lot of the times, we were connecting the map, map with the code and stapling comments together. So, y'all will see those all here, really transparent. The themes, though, I think were interesting, in that a lot of people talked about flooding. And we do wanna be really clear that this scope of work is limited to sort of updating your zoning districts. We, we are floodplain managers, right? Like, we, we totally appreciate this. We just supported the adoption of the Saint Tammany Resilience overlays, which are, like, all about reducing flooding. But it is kind of a separate scope of work, and we're talking with the town about that as being potentially something we do next. So, you'll see those kinda categorized here together, that there were a couple of comments, and we're, we're working on that separately. The Traditional Residential District, you'll see comments for and against that. And then, specific permitted uses, which y'all will see in the handout. Anything that's, like, shaded red with a Y, we were like, these are great suggestions, they fit with the master plan. And really, it was just us needing more eyes on it that are localized, to say, this is appropriate for our town. The minute we saw that, we were like, oh, yeah, it is. And so, those were kinda no brainers for us. These are really numbers one through, you know, and you'll see them highlighted in handout two, which is the permitted use table. Those are the things that changed, um, numbers one through 15. The first 15 comments, we were like, let's just take care of this. And then, some map change requests, which we have, I think, do we wanna print the map handout? I'm realizing it's, is it in the back? Okay, I think we might have, uh, maybe we just don't have anymore. Okay, so, we're gonna, we're gonna have a third handout, y'all, that are, that speaks to, oh, it's on here. There's a copy on here. So, when we get to it, yeah, it's on here too, so that, that works. And so, what we did with the map comments, a lot of times, the feedback was about the same piece of parcel, a piece of property. And so, in your handout, you'll see that they're kinda grouped together when they relate to the same parcel, to help us kinda walk through it. So, we'll talk through those. And so, tonight is really just about focusing on these decision points and talking through it kinda respectfully and openly. I will say, like, you know, we're bringing our planning expertise to the table, but that doesn't circumvent or override y'all's town, the town's character. And we're always trying to make sure that, you know, what you wanna see in the future is what's manifesting in this first. And our job is, like, let's not create problems unintentionally, or, or make this unfair, right? I think that's where we're coming from. And so, this next handout kinda focuses on a couple of things, or comments that came in, mostly about Highway 435, some historic district clarifications, lots of discussion on the Traditional Residential District. And then, there were elements of the map where people, you know, questioned where the mixed use was, questioned where the commercial was, and, you know, if those commercial sites should be mixed use, if some of those mixed-use sites should be residential. And so, I will say, one of the things that was kind of clear, and we've been doing this throughout the process, is we keep turning the knob to be less and less intense, right? So, we're like, we've kind of took a lot of commercial off the table. We, we got rid of the gateway, which was bigger uses. We sort of kept the, the mixed use, um, we expanded the mixed use, which is a smaller, sort of more artistic district. Very boutique. And so, there's only a couple, you can see this map, there's only a couple more red sites on the map. And I would just urge y'all to, to consider keeping some of them, because in your master plan, there's a lot of discussion about the town needing to encourage some more commercial uses. We work with a lot of towns, and sometimes, it's just one big use that, like, fronts the town for many, many years. And so, we wouldn't want something that, like, nobody even sees, kind of off in the, in the back, you know, to not potentially locate here, and that would resolve a lot of your financial challenges. And a lot of those financial challenges stem from just the lack of commercial uses. And so, I'm not by any means a developer, but I'm, but I'm very familiar now with y'all's master plan. And so, part of our job is to carry that vision, right? We're trying to think about how these things are consistent. And so, um, as we talk, I would say, if we sound like we're pushing for commercial, it's not personal, and it's not because we wanna commercialize Abita. I think we wanna make sure that Abita Springs is sustainable for many, many years to come, and that y'all's services that you enjoy, your public services, are able to be supported, right, into the future, and your quality of life continues to improve, right? With all that being said, I think, talked about this, so we can go through the handout, that's the goal, and the, um, and the map. And so, which y'all will see, I think the first number, that's like TBD, right? If you look in the handout on page two, you'll see the yellow stuff says, like, to be determined. These were things that, you know, weren't as obvious, okay, do we not have that on the, it's okay.
We have it on the website.
It's on the website. And so, one thing I will say, yeah, this we, this y'all have.
Sorry, it's the spreadsheet.
Yeah, the spreadsheet.
There were some upfront, but I think I took the last one.
Thank Evelyn.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. We took some personal information off, like, addresses, but that one's fine.
This one doesn't have any personal information.
That one doesn't.
It does?
I took personal addresses off to protect people's privacy.
That's, you, you need to do that. That's, that is a job well done. Nobody wants phishing emails or scams being sent to their home or email. Okay, so, good job, Kristen. Yeah, the, the internal review, yeah, that's the watermark. Okay, so, the first item, if you have this for the Planning Commission, it's number 16. It's looking at handout number two, which gets at the permitted use table. And what this is asking about is this crane scaffolding assembly as a permitted use in the light industrial. And it changed this to conditional, because that's heavy industry and not light industry in many cases. Traffic and heavy trucks are a special concern. And so, if you're looking at your permitted use table, this is getting at, what is the use? It's, it's a different terminology that we have in here, it's like, machine. Yeah, let's see, so, it's...
Machinery manufacturing.
Yes, so, the crane scaffolding assembly falls under the machine manufacturing.
On the very last page.
Okay, thanks, Evelyn.
So, these uses, just are used in those pages, they go from, like, the most mild, generally acceptable uses, right? Which are residential, all the way to the most intense. So, just if you're looking for something, that's kind of the stretch.
It would be nice if it was in alphabetical order, but it doesn't actually help you to see the intensification of uses related to permitted conditional uses as you move through the districts. Yes, so, right now, the machine manufacturing is only permitted as a P. So, it's permitted by right in the light industrial. Y'all only have this purple area in town that is light industrial, and this comment is asking that it be changed to conditional. And so, that's the, that's the question. Just that one use, yeah. And that would mean, in the code, we would add a use standard, unlike the heavy machinery, and we'd add another line, that would be just for this thing, and add a C. So, yeah.
So, there is one business on Pratt's Dairy Road that was grandfathered in when they purchased it, and they are doing crane manufacturing on that one parcel. This would allow it to be continued on the parcels around it. So, it is already happening on Pratt's Dairy right now. And this would basically take the piece of property they own that abuts it and says, you can do it on that piece of property as well. So, it wouldn't be something new, that, it wouldn't be new to that area, right? The, the, when it was sold, it was the continued use of what was allowed to be done on that property, so, yes, yeah. In the purple, yes. Then, yes, yes, yes. They do own it, but they can't, part of the agreement when they were grandfathered in was that they cannot expand. So, it was, it was basically saying, like, you can do it on this one parcel, and they're saying, well, we own the parcel next to it. No, it's gotta be added to the allowable uses for them to be able to do that.
And in the current draft, it is added to the allowable uses, and it's, it's permitted. So, that's, right now, if the code were adopted as written, it would be able to expand into the area that they already own.
And that's what we want your feedback on.
That's what we want your feedback on, yeah.
No, not, not yet, not quite yet. Just remember it, I'm sure you will.
Alex, one quick clarification. You just mentioned, if, if we go this route, you would add a line in the table? Or you would change machinery manufacturing to conditional?
You could do either one, right? Like, you could separate it as a specific use and keep machinery, machinery manufacturing permitted, and then say, like, except for crane manufacturing is conditional. But the reality is, even if it's conditional, they're still gonna come and ask for permission, and they're already doing it, and they own the site, and it's owned industrial. So, it's, it's gonna be difficult to not permit it if it were conditional, and not seem arbitrary, you know, and capricious.
You're talking about for the current business, but future business?
Future business.
Machinery manufacturing's pretty broad.
It is broad. Yeah, it's broad.
So, there are options. It can be separated in just crane manufacturing, and that can be conditional, or it can stay heavy machinery.
I mean, another option would be to change the map, too. Like, if y'all think this purple is in the wrong place, you know, that, there's a bunch of different ways to deal with this stuff, obviously.
Well, and we did have one version of the map that pulled the industrial back. Because the first community meeting, we had people who were like, we don't want this to go industrial, so we pulled it back. And then, there was more discussion about how much engagement had taken place with the owner, and there was concern about changing property use without having individual meetings, especially with regards to this being the only industrial site in, in town. And so, we flipped it back after that discussion to keep it as is. Because one of the intentions with the rezoning, the comprehensive rezoning, it's not to, like, significantly change things. It's really to sort of follow the, the, the feedback and the master plan. But we have gotten a lot of community feedback, so where we can fix something that most people agree on, we've taken those opportunities, you know? Or there's consensus. And this one is interesting, because there, there doesn't seem to be consensus. So, our instinct is to kinda leave it be and let it, let them come through. And that would say, that would mean, put it as conditional, because then you would be able to consider it, um, individually instead of in mass.
I just wanna clarify, if you are looking, oops, at this, the C means conditional. Means that you have to come to a meeting, a planning and zoning meeting, and ask for permission. If it's a P, it's permitted outright. So, we're gonna add those keys to future documents, so we know what we're looking at, because it can be kind of confusing. So, that's, that's the suggestion, is that what the suggestion is, to change it to conditional?
I think it is. I think, I think rather, the, the extreme thing would be to, to pull the zoning back. The other extreme thing would be permitted outright. So, I think the compromise is sort of to say, let's make it conditional so that they can ask. And now, it's a listed use that can be considered.
And then, there would, there would be a public hearing, right? If it was a conditional use. So, if you, those yellow signs on the side of the road that say, "Public Hearing," those are really important. It's hard to get all the information on those signs, but if you see a sign, just call us, and we'll tell you exactly what it's for, why it's there. And then, you have a chance to show up at the public hearing and voice your opposition, or agreement. Okay.
Any thoughts from the Planning Commission? Does that make sense?
I mean, my only thought was, kinda, I thought machinery manufacturing's pretty broad. I'd like to see it conditional, whether it's one line or two.
Just to know.
I don't, you know, but I do like conditional there, because I think the current business, I understand, we're, it's there. But having a, a industrial zone in town with a broad... But having a, a industrial zone in town with a broad definition seems probably not.
The best.
A good idea, and I think most people would agree on that.
I mean, there, there's not much you can do in light industrial that's outside of commercial. You can do a distribution logistics center, packaging and assembly facilities. Those are two permitted that aren't somewhere else. A drag strip, machinery manufacturing, and a collection point for recycling and repairing boats. So it's.
It's limited, yeah.
There's not a lot there besides noisy stuff.
And I think that limited list is a reflection of what it's surrounded by.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to make a note to switch this to conditional in the next draft. And then if, if anyone agrees or disagrees, just make a note. We're going to take those comments at the end.
We'll have a public comment section, session at the end where you have two minutes to go to the microphone and talk.
Perfect. Um, the next one speaks more to the site right above it, right? So this is, this kind of gets at where it's controversial. Like there isn't a unified vision on this. We actually got feedback requesting to change the site just north of it, which is undeveloped, to industrial. I did advise the, on, the resident that, that we've gotten a lot of feedback that they don't, most people don't want to see more industrial in Abida Springs. But we did advise people that came in and gave us feedback that we would, we would talk about it at the meeting. I don't recommend changing this and I did tell, tell her that as well. I was like, I, I don't think that we could recommend expanding industrial uses in the town of Abida based on what we've heard. But I did want to make sure y'all knew and that if you had any divergent perspectives, that we could take that into account in the next draft. Okay, I'm seeing shaking heads.
I agree, I don't think we want an expansion of industrial.
No, I don't think so.
It's a terrible location for access anyway, I mean.
Right, the roadways are rough, right.
That's not what we want. That's not what we want.
Okay, the next one is the site right next to it. It's, it, this one kind of is a, is a three-part piece. So two and three are sort of together. There was a lot of debate about the, the quail farm and, and how that worked and how it abuts Allen Road and those residences. And, you know, we talked to a couple of the residents on Allen Road and they were like, we would like to see the, um, the quail farm and the site that's in red go to blue and have pretty much the stuff behind the blue, like in the corner, all the way up to that dotted line on Allen Road. Can I use your mouse?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm going to show you. So, so this area right here, this whole like block area, they were, the suggestion was to move this all to mixed use. So it would turn blue all the way up to this edge. And then we had kind of different feedback at this corner, which was, this is a really good opportunity for a future gas station. It's right on the outside of town. And there were requests to flip this triangle to commercial, which I think in the interest of keeping some commercial in the town, that's not directly abutting residential is not a bad idea. And it's on highway 435, or 435 on the way out of town. And so I did think that this was, this was a reasonable flip. And it would kind of create some consistency next to those, those, this, this light area, this light yellow area is conservation residential. So it's more residential, it could be potentially abutting this, have this commercial site. So the nice thing about this square is it's abutting streets for the most part. It's not, um, abutting a lot of residential. And so if y'all have comments on that, I think this flip is something that we thought was reasonable. We want to bring, bring to y'all's attention.
Why, just not leading one way or the other, but why flip? Why not have a main intersection right there that's got more commercial use? I think that's how it started. Remind me what, what changed it back to a lighter use.
We keep kind of like going, I think the instinct has always been, don't remove all the commercial from 435 because it is a state highway and it's appropriate for commercial uses. And I think what we've tried to balance is the intensive, intensity of that commercial is because the roadway really isn't improved to handle a lot of traffic. And so we kind of were like, let's find some corners. And that's how the, the, the red square ended up there. I think we just didn't get the quarter right at the first.
Alex, I, I should point out that area is currently zoned highway commercial as well.
Yeah, like from.
Um, I, I forget what the exact boundaries are, but.
Right, it is currently, yeah, yeah. So it wouldn't be changing its designation for the triangle. It would be keeping it.
But if we flipped it, we would be changing the designation of the quail farm property.
Yes, because that's C2 as well.
Right, that's C2 as well. So it, it would downzone the quail farm, um, which is kind of a budding residential on both sides. So like, and because we heard from folks on Allen Road concerned about the future development of that area, you know, mixed use still allows a lot of things. It allows what's there in terms of entertainment venues and, and, you know, so I think the spirit of the mixed use district would allow for more development. It's just a little more, uh, it's, it's lower, it's less intense.
Lighter commercial.
Yeah. Any thoughts? And y'all will see that's comments, we kind of got a lot of feedback on this.
Yeah, I'd like to flip.
Yeah, so that's 18, 19, 20, 21 are all this little area here, so we'll do that. Um, and it also gets at 21 too, that's area three. Okay, yeah.
Just to be clear on switching those zones. Are you talking about switching all of the light blue to red?
So it would just be.
I couldn't see the arrow moving.
This little like, this like arrowhead area is what we're talking about? Switching to commercial because it's abounded more by streets and less directly abutting residential? And then making this red area and this yellow and blue, all this mixed use? So if you're, even though you're abutting this, the commercial, you're still able to do some light mixed use yourself, right? There isn't this, you know, huge shift in land use permissions on, from one side of the street to the other. And I think that's, that's a good thing. Yeah? Does that answer your question, Lex?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, all right.
I just couldn't see your arrow moving when you.
Oh yeah, no, you're good, it's, it's far.
Keep saying we need to get a laser pointer.
I know, area four has a lot of different feedback on it. This one was interesting. They wanted to change it from mixed use to residential, right? So right now, area four is this piece that has all this residential in it. I think we originally had it mixed use.
And people asked us to take it down.
Right, people were concerned about it being too much for this, this road network. Keep in mind that this parcel layer doesn't really reflect in all ways what it actually is there and what isn't. So we do our best with the data we have.
I thought that area actually has a commercial business in it presently.
An overlay.
Isn't there an air conditioning buil- business in there?
We're talking about Main Street and Level.
All right, we're not talking about this red area here?
Right, we're talking about number four. You're, you're looking at number five.
All right, all right, sorry.
You're good, you're good. And so.
So we did have Main Street and Level. Currently, there's a part of it that is residential-commercial overlay, which allows a certain use, a certain list of uses for commercial. And it has guidelines like 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So naturally, it was switched to mixed use, which is closest to the commercial residential overlay or the residential-commercial overlay. But then we got a lot of feedback that they wanted, people wanted the mixed use to be pulled back and for it to be kept residential. So that's what we did. And then we got feedback that we wanted it back. You know, people were saying, my property, I can do a light commercial on it right now and you're taking that away and you're making it just residential.
You know, to, to be fair, our permitted uses for mixed use was a little more intensive early.
Initially.
And then it's come down.
It has come down.
It's like a little less freaky, a little scary. I mean, one of the things when we were looking at these comments was, it seemed like one of the folks lived near Laurel, the northwest, northwest corner of Laurel and Grover. And so one way we could think about doing this is you could pull the mixed use just to include those lots that front on Laurel. So you, you don't have to pull the whole way back to Magnolia, but you could just scooch it over a little bit more to the east. And I think that would at least allow for, you know, a little bit of doubles, right? Cause the, the mixed use allows doubles. And one of these comments was, I, I like doubles, I think we need more of that. And so that might be, I think, the, the way that you could give a little, but you're not like going back and.
Yeah.
Back and forth and back and forth. But you, you're keeping that residential character intact for the most part.
Right, so to clarify, it would take the yellow that goes to Laurel Street, which is this first street right here, and turn up to Laurel Street, the mixed use. And then past Laurel would stay residential.
Would say as proposed, yeah.
Just move the line over one street.
So it's a compromise.
Yeah. We meet them not in the middle, but a little bit to the middle.
Right.
Moving at half a block, you're moving it.
Half a block, yeah. Yeah. And you're, you're capturing one of the folks who was asking for it. So for them, it's like they're, they're heard, you know?
And it is a downgrading for them since they are residential-commercial overlay right now. So a mixed use would be closer to.
What they can do today.
Yeah.
It seems like it's allowing more, but it's actually reflecting what is permitted.
Yes.
But actually maybe probably less because it's more restrictive, the mixed use.
Right, because it's mixed use, not residential-commercial overlay.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're talking about the 22116 Grover.
No one else can see that, but yes. That's their address.
Sorry.
Sorry.
What's their phone number?
How many people live there?
Part of it was scrubbed.
Okay, but that's.
Yes, the residents that are at that corner with that address have requested that change.
That's on highway 36.
Well.
No.
At a Grover, is they're saying, don't make it mixed use. So you don't want to go that far.
Right.
And then on Laurel, they're saying make it mixed use. So we're trying to like keep Grover happy and keep Laurel happy by pulling it just a little bit over.
Well, what I'm telling you is that looks like it's in the highway 36 blocks of blue to me.
So you know what?
But it's the dotted yellow, the dotted black line doesn't go all the way to, doesn't. See, it stops right there.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, that's between Live Oak and 36. It's Live Oak back to the west.
Where's Live Oak?
This is Live Oak.
Way over there, okay.
This is Laurel.
Now that's.
This is the hardest part. It's like, we've got folks on Live Oak who don't want it mixed use and you have folks on Laurel who do.
That's number 22. They're, they're already in blue.
Yeah, they're already in blue. And so this is why we're talking about this, because you've got folks on Laurel who want blue extended and then you got folks on Live Oak who want the residential extended. And so it's really a, I, I think for y'all, how do you imagine this area developing over time? Like, do you see just residential uses on Laurel and just residential uses on Live Oak? And maybe pulling the mixed use to Hickory, you know? And then, you know, for those who are asking for mixed use on Laurel, say like, maybe in the future, we can come back to that. I mean, I, I think that might be more reasonable, right? If, if the vision is, and most people in that area feel like it's a residential neighborhood.
Right.
We flipped it to back to, to yellow first, you know? Cause that's what we were hearing.
Yeah.
So maybe we just have the mixed use on Hickory.
That sounds better.
Yeah?
Well, Live Oak.
What do you think?
I don't think it's inappropriate on Live Oak.
Yeah.
Do y'all have a problem with Live Oak staying?
That's how it is right now.
Right.
I know. So like maybe just no change to this and just acknowledge that you can't make everybody happy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. No change. All right, area five.
So this is the intersection by the post office.
Where are we now?
Okay.
Post office corner.
So the post office is in green. And then the old church is right in this corner.
Oh, right.
And some of this is businesses right now, like the daycare.
Yeah.
And we just have folks who are wanting to see this go to mixed use. And then we have opposite comments on go and keeping it commercial. I think it's one of those things where it's like, we need some commercial. And so we're head, we're, my recommendation would be to keep it how it is. Cause it's kind of a corner and, you know, we have the other piece further up north.
It's off a state highway.
It's off a state highway. And keep in mind that on 435, that right now is like all commercial.
Right, so there's the dentist office, the attorney's office, the post office.
You call them that mixed use, was the dentist office, attorney's office, right? Because that's going up.
I'm just saying it's surrounded by commercial uses, so yeah, commercial seems appropriate.
But the, the zoning right now is heavier. Like the existing zoning, I think is, or the proposed zoning in the master plan is all commercial.
Yeah, and we've dialed that back a lot.
So we, our first map had all 435 was red. And then it switched to blue. And so like this goes back to what I was saying earlier. We keep kind of pulling back, pulling back, pulling back. We don't, we don't want to pull back so much that there's like.
There's nothing.
There's nothing left.
Right.
Right. And so it looks like it's a spot zone, but it's not. It's a whole block, you know, at, at the corner of sort of two different transition from a residential neighborhood to a mixed use district.
And right now, it's got a weird 150-foot strip on the property with the church where you can do residential-commercial overlay, but there's not much you can do with 150 feet of property. So it kind of ties their hands.
Yeah. So we're going to leave this as is for now, okay? The next one is area six. This is, um, there was some disagreement that the map should go all the way to what appears as Fourth Street on 59. All right, fourth. It's not marked, it's the other one, it's the one just south of that, right? It's second, third, fourth, it's right, right above the Keller label, yeah.
Okay.
And like, so.
It's this area.
Yeah, it's that area. And it's like really to pull, I think Evelyn, you, you talked to this person, right? Do you want to explain this? I don't want to get wrong. Yeah, a couple people.
Collectively, I think it was at least four, sorry, I'm not talking to the mic.
People may be wrong.
Many of y'all are here tonight to talk to. Talked to a couple people in this area and y'all made it clear that you wanted this area to change to the yellow rather than mixed use. So have it more strictly residential. And the people that I talked to at least at the meeting seemed to think that that was like the consensus, right? And everybody that lived in this area. So we're really just asking a firm whether or not you agree, yeah.
It's a little tricky to see too, so like, cause there's two areas here. Six is like this area, like it goes from second, Grover, behind the trees. And then over, it doesn't include this little square here. And it goes around, it's like this whole area here and then south. Switching that to residential is what we're talking about, I think we're hearing. This is all residential, right?
Okay.
Yeah?
Yeah.
But the next item up is to change that one to mixed use.
Yeah.
Exactly, this one's the other, the, the other side of the spectrum.
Y'all want the blank?
Oh, yes.
Here, I'll have to check on that.
One second.
I think, I think Second Street is, I think it's highway commercial or it's, it's not what you would think it is there. We'll have to look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not zoned residential, just on Second Street, Second Street up.
Yeah, we definitely, so, and, and just to kind of clarify what Kristen's talking about y'all is, is that shifting from mixed use, maybe like downzoning the existing property from commercial.
We're kind of getting some side conversations going.
Yeah, everyone's very engaged.
All good.
And so we can look at this some more. I think though, maybe we'll look at seven, Second Street and see if there's some heavier commercial that's there now. There's not, okay. I think the idea too is throughout any comprehensive rezoning process, you do end up kind of making your map more correct. Like in terms of what people think is there, what, what they expect to see built there. And so this might be one of those that you flip it to yellow, even though those, those sites maybe could have developed a commercial, it's not necessarily that the town would have wanted them to.
And it's more appropriate as residential.
Right. So on our next map, I think we'll flip this to yellow and see what happens, right? If anyone knows anyone who lives on this area, please encourage them to engage with us, just so that, you know, we don't actually spring this on them. The next meeting, we're not going to vote on it, so there's another opportunity to, to talk through that change. The next one is number 7. This one is interesting because we had, kind of had feedback about making this conservation residential, because you can't see it here, but there's a drainage all like tributary that kind of comes through here, which we thought was a good idea to not overdevelop that. So we flipped it to this conservation residential, which is a two-acre minimum lot. It's already developed on, on a large lot, and it, it does kind of come off like a spot zone, it doesn't look like it belongs. And so, but still, we, we liked the instincts, so we, we took care of it in, early on, but we did get feedback that this isn't consistent with what the people who live there want, right? So that's, that's part of this process, right? Is you kind of get good feedback, and then you hear what people want to do when, who live there, and both those things need to be taken into consideration. And so tonight, this square right here, we're talking about changing that to mixed-use, which would be consistent with the properties that sort of front on the trace, because you can kind of get to the trace, sort of, maybe in the future. I don't know if that's actually built out, it looks pretty forested. But to flip this back to mixed-use, which I think right now it's residential-commercial overlay.
I think so.
Right, so it would basically maintain what they can currently do, but at a lesser rate, because the mixed-use district is not as intense.
Yes.
Does that sound like a reasonable thing? I think we're getting there, it's an iterative process.
Okay.
All right. Number 8, I can do number 8.
No, I don't want it to change.
I mean, it, so this is always interesting, I think it's unique to y'all, but it's, it's not, I mean, I say that. So the, the historic district overlay is something that we've been working on clarifying for the town for the last six months or so.
Right.
The first step was just mapping it. Originally, it was just kind of a phrase in the code, and, and I think people still think of it as a phrase in the code, but it's not anymore, it's mapped. So it doesn't have to be 150 feet from the road, it's, it's an overlay, you can put it where it belongs and where it doesn't belong. And so, this originally had the weird, the lot- The road. So the road is actually managed by the HOA for this subdivision, and so the road fronted on the high, on the, is that the trace? Highway 36, yeah, you explain.
Okay, so this, these neighborhoods were already developed, they're fully developed, and they don't need to be changed to, to historic, because they're already developed and they weren't developed under historic. They have HOAs, they both have HOAs that oversee design standards in those neighborhoods. So there's no reason to switch that to historic, and I think the comment was just confusion.
I think it is.
Yeah.
And the two, the two properties that are on the, on 36 are still historic.
So everything that fronts the highway still has to go through historic. So the houses that were built in the front of Abida Oaks actually aren't even a part of their neighborhood. They went through the historic process and got permission and had their designs approved. But the neighborhoods do not need to change to historic.
And just so, for those of y'all who are new to this, the, those brown lines, that's what's indicating something is in the historic district or not, right?
Yeah.
There is. Yeah, all, so everything that fronts on the highway, I think the one that we got that was different in this was this little guy right here, and it was like, because it touches-
Yeah, it like barely fronts, it was a correction.
It was like, can you please not be in the historic? I think this one wanted to flip the other way.
No, 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 no.
It's the rec district, so it's fine, we just leave it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that. But I think this has already been sort of corrected in the map, and it was just a question of like, why aren't we in it? And I was like, I think Kristen answered that well, and if y'all are okay with leaving it as is corrected, I think it's, it's a reflection of the development patterns that are there.
And it's already developed, there's, I think, one vacant lot between both subdivisions. So, it would be weird if that one lot had to go through historic, it wouldn't match. Can you, can we save it for the end? We're making, we were making everyone wait till the com, the public comment.
All right, and then I think number 8, oh, I don't know how to do this, Kristen.
That is number 8, so we're on 9.
We're on 9, yeah.
We're on 9. 9.
Okay.
Do you want to explain this one?
Yes. This property has been commercial for a very long time. I actually spoke to the property owner earlier this week, and she would very much like to keep it commercial. And that's pretty, pretty much it.
And it's currently commercial.
It's currently commercial, so it's not, it's not changing, it's just staying commercial.
It is. It is, and I think something to keep in mind with the commercial areas is that y'all did just recently adopt commercial development standards, which require landscaping, parking, and all kinds of amenities within those developments. And the design standards are underway too for historic, and they're, they're in, the south part that's undeveloped is in historic.
Yes.
Yeah, so it would go through the Historic District Commission, any proposal.
Right, and for what it's worth, the prop, the town is in the middle of doing an exchange, South Street for approximately a 30-foot town-owned drainage right-of-way along this southern side of the property. So that would kind of serve as an extended buffer for south wind. And there are houses developed on the front of Millar Street, there are already houses there. So when, even though it's zoned commercial, because the whole block is commercial, those houses are going to stay there. So the commercial won't be on Millar Street right there.
Do you think mixed-use would be a minimal compromise to the landowner?
I tried, no, I tried.
Yeah. I think it's, it's one of those things that, with, with the scoop of the work that we're doing, you know, comprehensive updates, it's like you want to build consensus as much as you can. And just keep in mind that for the commercial districts, this is where it's like important to look more at the permitted uses.
Right.
What's permitted by right, what isn't, and then understand those design standards. So if you have concerns about what could get built here, take a look at the code, the written code, right? And look at those commercial development standards, and that might put your mind a little at ease.
Right.
But if you have questions or you want to see something changed in those standards, that, now is the time to do that, you know?
So if there's a commercial use that you're specifically worried about, you know, maybe you suggest that it's added to-
Or made it be conditional.
Conditional.
Yeah.
So it's not just automatically permitted, they have to come to planning and zoning for the use to be approved. And again, that would be a public hearing, the people in the area would be notified, and be able to show up and voice their opinion.
Yeah, and just keep in mind, the south part's already in historic, so there's a public hearing that would occur.
Right.
For any development. Area 10, this one really is a comment about flooding, and it, we, we wanted to make it obvious in here, or, or call it out, because it, it's kind of like, the feedback that we're getting just north of this traditional residential area is like, there is a concern about infrastructure, flooding, you know, more dense development, having negative impacts on the, the part north. And so, the, the feedback we're giving on this is like, we're going to hopefully look at this as the next phase, and the flooding, and like how development occurs. It's not something that we can really do in this, and there's not a recommendation to change.
Right.
Area 10, as far as I know, Evelyn, are you, is this, am I missing something for this one?
Sorry, so, A- A- Area 10 is the, the blue mixed-use area there in the center. I, I think there was a comment that the area should be zoned residential.
That's what I thought too, I'm like reading this, and I'm like, I'm not seeing that though, in the-
It, it may not have, yeah, it, it may not have been a written comment, I, I, I don't recall.
Yeah, so I feel like the question is that the blue, this blue area here, Matt, this, this guy?
Yeah, correct, right in the center there.
This guy, and I think this lo, this area too-
That was a correction.
That's a correction. So I do want to make sure, like, the folks that came in here, I think this was originally traditional residential, is what we were proposing?
It was a mistake.
But it was, but it was all on accident, yeah, so they called that, we were like, good, good catch, like, this is, no one's perfect. So this was flipped back to residential, and then the, the request is to flip this to residential, and so y'all's feedback on that, how you feel about it? I think this is the trace.
I think it's appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's the trace.
Yeah, changing it is appropriate.
All right, so we're all saying yes to residential on 10?
Yes.
Okay, and then 12?
11.
11? Yeah, this was an interesting one.
We have to clarify-
Yeah, let's talk about this one.
We have to clarify that it is currently industrial. We, on our draft map, we said, "Let's make it residential." And there were some people that said, "We want it changed," or "We want it to stay industrial." So we're not, we're not adding industrial here, we're just debating whether it should be changed from current industrial to residential.
Right, it's just been yellow on all the proposed maps?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because it's a very strange place to have industrial.
It is currently industrial or commercial?
It's industrial.
It was commercial, you sure?
I don't remember that being industrial, I feel like-
No, it's, it is industrial.
Matt, Matt, no.
It's, I promise.
Right, like, let's all be on the same page.
I just want to pull it up real fast.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea to pull it up, because like, we don't, we don't want to put a product in front of y'all that y'all don't feel 100% confident in saying we're, we know what we're doing, right? We know we're approving.
Questioning Kristen, because she's usually right.
Right, we, we all trust Kristen.
So this is all, and this is at the end of Dundee Street, which is barely a road.
Right.
It's like a half a road.
It goes back for the cemetery.
So that is not where you'd want industrial, ever.
But if you put in the Harrison Avenue extension, it would be on-
Correct, but is that really what we want on Harrison Avenue? Extension.
Yeah. And like, the thing to keep in mind too is that when this map, when and if the map is approved, you might have someone who comes to town and says, "I want to build this thing, and it's amazing, and it needs industrial zoning." And you can think about rezoning what they're proposing. So it doesn't mean that you'll never have more industrial, it just means that they've got to ask, and you have the ability to say no.
Right, there is a process to rezone your property.
Yeah.
And it's, in order to rezone your property, you have to get so many signatures from people, you have to get a certain percentage of people within so many feet of your property. So it's not impossible, but it does have certain safeties in, in place to make sure that it's with approval of the area.
Right, that you don't freak out your neighbors.
Right.
That's the idea. So are we saying, "Let's keep it residential," even though this is a significant change, right? Right, exactly, so it would, it would be changed from the current map industrial to residential, which is what's proposed now, keeping the proposed recommendation residential.
No, there's no industrial developed, and I, I believe there are some residences in the area as well.
Can we save all the questions, because it's not fair if I tell one person they can't answer a question, and then other people can't answer?
I'm trying not to answer.
Sorry, I'm trying to be fair.
We're all trying not to answer, it's really our natural instinct.
Yeah.
All right, keep recommendations. All right. And then area number 12, so the, the discussion on this is the traditional residential area to change the neighborhood residential, which is the yellow, and this gets back to the bigger question of keeping a traditional residential district, and just mapping it on a limited area in the town, and whether this is the appropriate area to do that, if y'all have strong feelings one way or another. Y'all heard me kind of speak to it generally, but I think, you know, there may be public comments if you don't want to comment now, whatever y'all are comfortable with.
It's the future site of Ashner, Walgreens Auto Zone, and a gas station are already there.
Yeah.
To me, it feels like it's appropriate for commercial to be there, and if the Harrison, when-
You mean traditional residential? We're talking about the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're talking about the orange.
I have no comments about that.
It's been a long day.
I thought it was where the words are, it's not where the words are, it's where the black dotted line is, it's sorry.
It's this area here, this, this brown area. Here.
It has been a long day.
It's been a long day.
So if we change, if we do change the neighborhood residential, traditional, that's the only traditional?
That's the only bit that's left, yeah.
And that was primarily a concession to lot size, right? To allow an area of town with smaller lot size?
60 by 120, yes. Yeah.
I think you're going to have a lot of public comments on this.
I think so too, which we're, but I think if y'all want to wait till we talk through public comment and then weigh in, I think that's fine. There's lots of comments on this, there are 37 through 47, so 10 comments in your spreadsheet. And keep in mind that if, if, if you have totally the ability to say, "I don't know yet," and just read over this for the next meeting, you don't have to make a decision on this site, I want to make sure y'all have this in front of you, so you just know what we heard. Okay? All right, number 13. Oh, this I thought was a really good comment, that's way at the bottom, it's a weird spot.
Oh, yes.
It's like a little annexation that happened, see this little guy? He's, he's a very, very nice gentleman.
He's a very nice gentleman, this is, he owns car medics, and he owns the property next to it, and he doesn't want to have to build historic when he's that removed from town. And we don't want him to request to be annexed out of the town.
Right, because he's much-needed commercial.
Yes. Yes.
There's nothing historic next to it, except the house across the street.
There is an orange tire shop next to it, so it would almost look weird if it was historic.
And I, you know, I did tell him, this is the ramifications of the old historic overlay, like, we mapped it, so you could see how it was applied. And so now we can kind of fix it, clean it up, I think this is an easy cleanup, to remove the historic from that site.
I, I agree. Yeah.
I think we like these ones.
Thank you. I love that orange tire place. You won't drive past it if you're looking for it.
Should we pause for public comments? Because I hate to have people waiting for-
I think we're done after this one.
Yeah, we only have 13, this is the last one for the map. Everything else is, it wasn't something we could fix.
Okay. This could work. Do we want to talk next steps and then do public comments?
I think, what was 13, I just want to make sure, was there, that was 13?
That was 13, yeah.
All right, cool. All right, so, before we get to next, I mean, the public comment, I do want to just kind of reemphasize again how, how we're seeing this play out, and, and this doesn't have to be final, right? So y'all tell us if this feels good or not. The plan was to either to brief the council on the 5th, so I was going to send Kristen just a quick update to share with the council, to just explain that we had this meeting, that y'all are working on the code and the map, and that, and y'all tell me if this is okay, when I send, when we send y'all the draft code and the map, I was also going to send it to the council, so that everybody is seeing it at the same time, and the discussion is really robust, so that the council isn't sort of like, having to look at something you've already approved, and, and they have really good insight on something that we just didn't think about. So we were going to let them know that they'll see that clean draft in the middle of August. Y'all will meet at the end of August to talk through it, if they want to come to the meeting and listen, or provide input, that's like the best way, so that when it gets to their desk, they're not like, "What is this?" You know, "Why did I get this?" And so, August 28th is really discussion, we're going to have a staff report for y'all that goes over this process, because it's been many months that we've had each packet and each element. So we're going to recap all that in a short staff report, but something that you can easily reference. And then September 25th, we're thinking this will be introduced as an item to vote on.
If y'all are ready at the August 28th meeting. We'll talk about it at the August 28th, if you're ready, then it'll be advertised as a public hearing for September and voted on.
Okay.
If, if you need more time, that's fine.
Yeah. At this point, it's drafted, it's just a matter of making changes here and there. And then October to November is when we're thinking it'll go to council. If we need to do another, like, day session, we could. I think if we do it with the council, that could also be helpful, like, if there's a council briefing, I feel like that helps. Because not all the questions you want to like, talk about in a public hearing, you know?
Right.
A lot of people came out because they knew they could just talk to us one-on-one.
Right.
And so, that's what we're thinking, in terms of next steps.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, well, so I think that's it, I think we can move to public comment. I guess quick, quick administrative, since we have good attendance here tonight, we're going to stick with two minutes. Two minutes per public comment, that's our normal, that's, we get a little loose sometimes, and we also can't engage anything that's not on the agenda. So if you bring something up that's off-agenda, it's, it's a one, one-direction comment, right, for us to hear. We could probably have a small amount of limited engagement if it's on topic, on agenda, since we've waited till the end for public comment. But if I tell you two minutes, please don't think I'm being rude to you, we just have a lot of people and probably a lot of comment, and we would be here till who knows when. So it's not an attempt to be rude, I feel like we've done a lot of community engagement and a lot of opportunities for, for voices to be heard. So please don't misinterpret if we have to cut you off, we still want your comment, we just may not be able to do it in the format of this meeting, so.
And I just also, sorry, want to say real fast, you can still stop by the office, email, your comments will get to this team. However you get them to us, they will reach everybody. So, if you, if you need to send us a book that you can't do in the two minutes, you can do that.
So will you update comments, something like we did tonight?
Yes, so as we get comments, you guys will get them as well, and Desiree Line will help me sort through them.
Make sure you go to the microphone.
Yeah, so, silly question, do we have any, anybody that wants to give a public comment? Is a microphone, please state your name, and make sure, we'll just leave it on-
Okay, E.J. Boudreau, I just have a suggestion on these maps. In this town, there's a lot of tributaries to the river, deep drainage ditches, things like that. Those need to be on the map, so that people can actually see where the streets end, where they would have to have a bridge to do this kind of thing. Because some of those areas where you're going to have mixed-use, you couldn't be able to get to them anyway if you were walking, they're so worried about having a walkable town. We need to have some on- We need to have something on that map to show the river, all the tributaries and the deep drainage ditches. And that way, people can see where the streets are and that would help them with this deciding about these districts.
Thank you.
It's on.
Yeah, it's on, it is a lot clearer.
I just don't project too well.
On YouTube than the speakers.
Yeah. I think a lot of this is, the way it's zoned, you just can't physically do some stuff in some of these places and...
Yeah, it's a good comment, thank you.
All right.
Okay, please.
Adrian Petrasini, I'd like to comment on 11, the Zone 11. You said it was a significant change, but if there's no industrial now, I don't understand why it's a significant change. I know that you had recommended, I found out at the beginning, to be changed to residential. I think residential is way more appropriate for that area. I think anybody who's been in that area would agree with that. So, yeah, I don't understand why it's a significant change and I would ask that you keep it residential.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah.
Just to clarify, the question that we were asked was to keep it industrial. And so the recommendation is going to zone it residential, so, which is what you're saying?
Residential.
Yeah, so it's going to, the proposed zoning matches the residential development pattern that's currently there, so...
Okay, and I just want to say that I support doubles. I think doubles are an avenue for home ownership for middle-class people. Abida historically has always, I think, has always had doubles. So I don't understand where this idea comes from, that it is so against the nature of the town. So I am saying that wherever you're saying you want to put doubles, put them.
Thank you.
Yeah, and right now, they're currently permitted anywhere that's light blue.
Right, the mixed use, yeah, duplexes are allowed. Any other? Yes.
Lee Berrios, Abida Oaks. So two minutes isn't enough to really address some of my questions, so I'm going to go see Kristen. But I did want to say, and you may consider it not relevant to the P and Z, but I'll make the comment and not expect a response. So as you're, as we're going through this process of zoning, rezoning, all that, for the betterment of Abida, I haven't heard anything relative to how we're going to address the roads that are going to accommodate this development and, you know, get through. So I hope that, I don't know if you all work in coordination with the city or if that's a totally different, but I think it's very important that we start considering meeting up to the standards that I guess the town has for all the roads, because they're terrible right now. And if you're going to be developing more, which obviously you're planning for, especially for the commercial or industrial, that that be put at the top of your list. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ron Belitch, I'm with the historic commissioner, live on Magnolia Street. I was watching online, I said, "This is just too much fun, I have to come down." But carrying on to what Adrian said, the, what's happening on Harrison, on the part that is developed, is going to be very, very nice. The Ashner development that's under construction now is really going to be, not like anything you've ever seen at Ashner, it's going to be very nice. And I think the long-term planning guide for Harrison was that was going to be sort of Abida's front door, is everyone sort of bypass the town to get to 36. So I think, I agree that it shouldn't be industrial, but you might want to make a lot of that land for whenever it happens, when the state does figure out how to get through the wetlands with Harrison and go all the way to 36. Maybe make that some of the mixed-use area, because if we're going to have a lot of commercial properly developed, like Ashner, like AutoZone, that are, that are within the new planning guidelines, that's the opportunity for growth. The big, huge, if you bring it down, Kristen, a little bit, the big, huge commercial, up, sorry. You bring it up, up to 59, keep going. All that red commercial on the eastern side of 59, that's all swamp. No one's ever going to develop that, and I think that's why EJ said we need to show the rivers, because the Long Branch, which is what the Long Branch Hotel was named after, it goes right through there, you'd have to build 15 feet up off the ground and you'd never get approval to fill. So that's a lot of, a lot of commercial that can't be developed. And then the only other comment is that Dundee Loop and the Abida Oaks are already in historic overview. We do approve buildings in Dundee, we have.
Only on the highway, only...
We have approved homes, I can remember the names of the people whose homes were approved in Dundee Loop. And Historic originally did approve the layout of the Dundee Loop townhouses and Abida Oaks. We just, we just did a house in Abida Oaks not long ago, it went through Historic.
The house that you did in Abida Oaks was on the front, it wasn't in the back.
We did John and Nathan's house in Abida Oaks. They have different guidelines, they don't have to be 33 feet up, they can be 17 inches up, they have to have a certain front porch, but it goes through Historic for review. So it's like Historic Lite.
They get offline and...
But Dundee and Abida Oaks are both under some sort of historic oversight already. So you're not adding anything, you're just sort of leaving the special district that's already there.
Thank you, Ron, appreciate it.
Sissy Wigan. I'm going to second what Adrian said, and I've said it several meetings, I agree, I would like more duplexes, I would like us to be an attractive place for younger people to live. I don't want just upper-middle-class people here, not that I don't love us all, upper-class, middle-class, but I would like more housing for younger, younger people, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? We have one here.
Hello, my name's Scott Payne, I live out, first house there on Allen Road, with a rusty roof that needs to be replaced. But, anyway, I want to talk about that area. I am in favor of changing the Quail Farm property to mixed use, which it was, long story, there's a bait and switch to get that to commercial years ago, should have been mixed use all along. The, also the area, just to the east of there, that's shown change to commercial. I strongly oppose that. I've been living in that area for over 40 years. I know the traffic right around Pratt's Curve right there is, it's a dangerous, or dangerous curve, it always floods just east of Pratt's Curve right there. Anybody that knows the area knows that if it is a heavy fog, it'll flood right there. That is a really bad place for commercial. Mixed use would allow low-traffic commercial, right? Regular commercial is going to allow high-traffic commercial. There are also, that's the highest point in Abida, right there. But it's the most flood-prone area in Abida because of drainage. Long Branch was mentioned earlier. Long Branch is all clogged up and needs to be cleared out, that would alleviate a lot of that. But in any case, the traffic coming around Pratt's Curve right there doesn't need to be going into, people stopping on the highway to make turn into commercial businesses, you know, that would open up Dollar General's gas station, things like that. Also, all around there is residential. We do have some businesses that would currently fit into mixed use. You wouldn't be putting anybody out by making it mixed use. That's what it should be. All of that should be mixed use, in my opinion.
Thank you. Yes.
Appreciate it, thank you all, thank you for your service. Tim Sanchez, that's right there on that corner right there, they're trying to change to commercial, that's family-owned property. Another gentleman, Mr. Payne, said about the traffic on 435 and Allen Road, that's a lot of traffic on 435. If you do the traffic study, absolutely, that's a lot of traffic, that's a state highway. So if it is changed to commercial, I don't see any difference as far as the more traffic, because it's, there's a lot of traffic. So my opinion, if it does pass to commercial, I believe that'd be a good place for a business. So, and then we had, it's on, I know I got two minutes, I could tell people about 20 minutes, but I appreciate it. Right there on that corner, it's two, it's access to two roads, Parish Road and State Highway. And then some of that property, if you go up Allen Road, it's Silver Springs Drive right there, some of that property goes back there too. So that's a big piece of property right there. So if you turn on Silver Springs Drive, there's another like an acre and a quarter back there, that's, that whole piece of property is all adjacent, it's all together. So, again, this, you got access on both highways, 435 and Allen Road, so I appreciate the time and thank you all.
Absolutely, thank you. Any others? Yes, all right.
Laura Reagan. I'm concerned about the number nine, right by South Winds, north of South Winds.
Let's go to number nine.
And...
By South Winds.
Yeah, it's...
Commercial section.
Right, and that, see, my sister lives, well, I live in South Winds, and I have two sisters in South Winds, and I didn't realize that sliver of land right north of South Winds is commercial, and that's owned by the same person? That whole chunk? Okay, and that's going to be conditional commercial? That little sliver?
So right now, it's currently zoned commercial, so we're, the recommendation is to keep it as-is, not change it. And then if you look at the text, like the permitted use table, if you look at the commercial district, you'll see what's permitted, depending on what people propose to develop, a lot of the uses are conditional, so they come through a public hearing. The land is also overlaid with the historic district overlay, so they would have to go through the historic district commission and meet the historic district guidelines.
Right.
So even though it's commercial, there are some protections with the proposed code and with your current code that are in place to make sure, for example, like, I know someone mentioned a Dollar General, I'm going to throw kerosene on the fire. If somebody were to propose a Dollar General, it's conditional, they wouldn't be able to just come in and put one up, right? They'd have to meet the historic district guidelines and they'd have to go through planning and zoning, and they would have to be, it'd have to be compatible with the neighborhood and have all these amenities.
I should also say, based on the...
That would be more like a conservat, what is it? Conservation residential to me, because it's wooded area, my sister's house is right there, and it's just all wooded right there, the sliver in between the two. And then you said it would be landscaped or something?
Right, the commercial development standards that were adopted by the town, what, in May? In May would apply to any new development on that site as well, which includes landscaping, parking standards, building standards, architectural design standards.
I don't know, it's just...
And I'm sorry, we're out of time, but there's, if you want to stay, maybe after, because we're close to the end, there's a lot to talk about there too. There's, there's other ordinances that we're working on that will come into play in that section as well. Yeah. Thank you. Yes.
All right, I'm Angie Reach, I live on Pratt's Road, and I just wanted to go back to number one for a moment. I know that we discussed not allowing that number one to be changed to industrial at all. The area on Pratt's Road is fully residential as far as now, with larger lots, still a lot of wooded areas. And again, if we go to 59, I'm sorry, I'm, 59 like right off of Pratt's. Yeah, sorry. Those large areas, I just want to mimic what the other gentleman said, those areas being developed into large commercial areas of a gas station or a store, anything is going to cause a significant flooding concern, which I know we haven't addressed yet. And even the area that you have is mixed use, right on the corner of 36 and 59, that's an area that floods now if the river gets too high. And where's all that water going to go? I think it would be a travesty for the people who live around that area, even in the town of Abida, to have that developed. So that, those are my two concerns. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Steven Solace Alderman. Your comments about 36 and 59, I own that, and you're right. That red commercial, that's the Long Branch Creek, so nothing could ever be developed there. We could put some camps there, maybe along the Long Branch Creek, about 30, 40 feet in the air. And then...
Ron, could you confirm, please?
I'm not sure, to south of, or by CarMedics, is that historic?
CarMedics itself is historic, and I went through historic.
Oh, because they were trying to convert that...
They were remanded into the town, but they wanted it to be at the town.
All right, they wanted to convert that to non-historic.
You mean down 59?
Could you go to that, please, Alex? That little spot right there.
Well, they went through historic. I don't think you could build anything else on it.
No, they want to take it out of historic. I didn't know that was...
It's already there.
Isn't that outside of our boundaries there?
No, it's part of the...
Okay.
The goal is to develop the vacant lot next to it.
Got you, okay.
That's our, that's the vacant lot next to it, is there a tension on it?
No, they can develop it.
And then Allen Road, the Hemlock Court, the Quail Farm, the front of that is already residential and it's been cut up into two acre lots, is that correct? So that's residential, and I agree with the gentleman that spoke earlier. I have to take Pratt's Dairy Road to my house because the bridge is condemned across Hickory Street. That's an extremely dangerous road, and Alex, as you know, it's the most accident-prone curve in the town of Abida Springs, and putting more commercial on that road is probably not a good thing.
And I would just add that one of the things that the town just recently did was the Safe Streets for All Plan, and includes improvements on that curve to realign that street. And so even though it's dangerous now, I do want to acknowledge that with zoning, you have to kind of think about the future, you know? And so when we discussed this, I did bring that up, we brought up the drawings and the designs, and, you know, they're costed out, you don't know if the town's going to get, I mean, we hope the town gets money to improve that, that intersection, because it is so difficult.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to just give a quick comment to what Steve said about CarMedic. The goal of the Alderman several years back was to make sure that all the corridors into Abida, 435, 36, 59, everything, and Dog Pounder, or Harrison Avenue, would all have commercial overlays, so everything coming into and going out of town would all have some commercial similarities. That's why CarMedic was put in commercial, that's why Walgreens, Home Bank, AutoZone, all went through commercial. That's why we're having issues right now with Texaco trying to change all their signs, because now we're saying, "Okay, now you got to go through historic." It wasn't in historic originally. So if you take CarMedics out and they tear it down and put a Dollar General there, like all the other ugly Dollar Generals, like the one that's on 36 that slipped through, it should have gone through historic and never did 15, 20 years ago, that will not be consistent if the town continues to grow south. So the Alderman had, there's a general statement in zoning that all the corridors in the town will always be 150 feet deep historic, so there's a danger of taking it off. And, I mean, CarMedic went through historic, so it wasn't that hard.
Thanks, Ron, appreciate it. Any other comment? Stuart?
Since I have way too much to say, I'm going to be sending emails to you and comments to cover it all, but maybe I can squeeze into the two minutes a little comments on. If you can move the map to six and seven. Okay, the sort of bottom right, far right, little yellow bit that's in six, that's me. And this kind of started with my saying that I'm residential and I don't want to be changed into a commercial-type stuff like the rest of downtown. And somehow that got misunderstood, and it was just my property that got changed. But it doesn't do any good for me to be residential, because I'm already residential. My problem is people around me may die and have heirs who want to sell it and profit and whatnot. And so I'm worried about the neighborhood, and so what this six is doing, I think, is expressing that, and my neighbors in that direction are definitely in agreement. And my neighbors in that direction are definitely in agreement that it's residential. And the nearest commercial, it's hard to tell on the map, but it's the next block up. So, what looks kind of like Second Street and Grover Street, but Second Street doesn't exist, that, that's kind of the borderline between what's genuinely residential and somewhat commercial. But, somehow, also in that, I was made the conservation-type. Now, I'm all in favor of conservation, but somehow, the definitions are kind of backwards because that means I can't be a wildlife preserve because I'm conservation. I, I don't know, anyway, that, I don't think that was intended. And then, the property across, which you're talking about, across the street from me, it's, it's a pond much of the time. I mean, there's a stream that goes right through the middle and it's mostly a pond. So, it doesn't make sense to change that to multi-use. It, it probably should be some sort of residential, and even that, it.
I think, Stuart, we're out of time, I apologize. I think some of your comments did get actually incorporated tonight during the meeting. You may want to stay after and just, you know, get a. Yeah, I think, I think your message was heard before the meeting, but you may want to stay after and just chat. Anyone else?
Brenda Lanier. I'm on Sixth and Highway 59, and I see my property is gonna be changed from historic residential to mixed-use. Going into Abida on 59, it's a beautiful area. You have the Avni Homes, you have the Ellander Homes, you have the Abida River, you have the draping oak trees, it's really, and they have lights in them at night. It's like a fairy tale coming into town. Now, we're gonna have all these businesses. It used to be that you could have, you had that overlay from Ninth Out where you could have 150 feet. It's worked. We have the orthodontist, we have the snowball stand, the full-moon nursery. Everyone liked it like that.
We're, we actually all agreed to change that back to neighborhood residential. The piece that's in the. Yeah.
It's gonna be moved back?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
Any other comment? Yeah.
My name's Tim Grigsby, I live on Allen Road, if you would go back to three for me. So, I'm the third house on the left on Allen Road, and, and I'm, I'm in agreement with Scott as far as the Quail Farm, it was, I believe, should've been mixed-residential a while back, but just, you know, it was kind of convoluted at the time. I guess, it must've been about seven, eight, and nine years ago. But, I wanted to talk about Allen Road. They overlaid it just a few years ago, and it's already in bad shape again. It's a no-truck route, and I see commercial trucks pass every day, like 100 times a day. You know, so, when you start talking about traffic, you know, if someone would at least, I, I said, this is probably for another meeting, but if someone would at least enforce that, it'll eliminate, alleviate some of the traffic. And then, that turn from 435 West to Allen Road is, you know, accidents there all the time and people hitting the telephone pole. But, I think when they overlaid it, they made it narrower. It, it actually made it worse than it actually was. But, but I am in agreement with Scott that, that, and this flooding out there is horrendous. But, that's my comment.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other comment? Anyone else? Sure.
My name's Joey Salino, I live on Pratt's Road, and I am Carmetics. We got annexed in by Louis Fitzmaurice. Come in, he wanted to help us out, get built, tax dollar, revenue for the parish. I live in Abida, I was all for it, I wanted to be in the parish, so that was great for us. Now, I want to build another building next door to do the same thing, eventually rent it out, produce revenue, tax revenue. The reason I wanted to get out of Historic is because when I've been meeting for the last two years or so, I keep getting shot down on a metal building. I don't have a problem putting a facade or anything on it, I just want to build another building like I got that we can rent and produce revenue for Abida, revenue for me, revenue for Abida. I understand Historic, but I really don't think my little, little dot in the corner is really not even in Abida. Abida really starts at Harrison. There's metal buildings past me, north of me, there's metal buildings south, there's metal buildings across the street. So, that's why I wanted to get out of Historic, so that we could build a building and get some revenue coming in. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other comment? No? I think not, okay, thank you very much. Any other comment over here? All good? You guys good?
Yep.
Here, a quick question.
Alright.
I know we need a traffic study for commercial. Do we need traffic studies for mixed-use?
There's some uses that are specifically called out in the use table that have use standards that require a traffic study. I think that's the way it works. It's not the zoning district that triggers it, it's the use itself. So, uses that tend to generate traffic, I think, one of the feedbacks that we got at the 718 meeting, for example, was schools and churches, like, generate a lot of traffic. So, they're permitted by right, but they've got to submit a traffic study even though they're, they're in the mixed-use and even in the residential districts because it, it does have an impact on the neighboring sites.
I'd say, too, so you sent the clean code draft, and the, for, outside of the chart, each use that warrants additional detail has a section. So, if there's something you're worried about, just highlight on.
Let us know. Yeah.
I just couldn't remember.
Or anything else, right?
It's a long document, I couldn't remember a word.
So long.
I do want to make it a.
It's very long.
You've got time to come up with.
You've got plenty of time. Keep in mind that if you're looking online at the clean draft, it doesn't include anything we just talked about, and it doesn't include the feedback that folks gave us on the 18. So, if you see it and you're like, "Well, my feedback isn't on here, they didn't hear us," that's not the case. The one that we're gonna send out in mid-August is gonna have the updated information in it that we talked about tonight, it's gonna have this updated permitted-use table. And, and just keep in mind, if you see it and you're still like, "I'm confused, I talked about this and it didn't change," come and see us, let Kristen know, we'll either explain, or we'll clarify, or we'll fix it because nobody's perfect, as much as we try to cover everything, we're not perfect. So, we'll, we'll get there if we work together.
So, I just want to say, as soon as the, in mid-August, as soon as that draft is ready, I'm gonna post it on the website. Please feel free to look through it, email, let us know, "Hey, I have a question about what's on this page, I don't like this," because we're still collecting public comment, and we want to hear from you.
Was that your announcement? That was the announcement, okay. Any further announcements, all good? Anybody have any community announcements, anything relevant? No, all good?
We need to move.
We need a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn our meeting for the evening.
So, move, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for attending, appreciate it.
A lot of good comments. I mean, there's nothing we can do, there's, there's nothing we can do about the fact of this. We will be discussing it more next time.
I came there because I got like two minutes.